Can I get your roll call, please?
Sorry. Councilmember Daniel Damian?
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez?
Present.
Mayor Prochema Alejandra Avila?
Here.
And Mayor Emmanuel Estrada?
Here. Thank you for that, City Clerk. At this moment, I will open up Public Communications. City Clerk, is there anybody looking to speak?
No, we do not have any speakers.
Great, and then just to be safe, is there anybody, if anybody in the audience is looking to speak, but they're not fill out a card, now's your time to do so. Seeing that nobody is looking to speak, I will not close Public Communications, and I believe we have a study session regarding campaign contributions presented by Jonathan Stain, Executive Director of California Common Cause, and Sean McMorris, Policy and Organizing Consultant.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. My name is Jonathan Metzstein. I am the Executive Director at California Common Cause. I'm really pleased and honored to be invited to present to you today about contribution limits in local politics. California Common Cause is a nonprofit organization dedicated to nonpartisan advocacy around building a better, healthier California democracy at the state and local level. We work on voting rights, redistricting reform, money in politics, and other issues to try to build the best democracy possible. I don't join you tonight as an expert in your local politics or the issues confronting your city. I just come to you with information about contribution limits, so you all can make a decision about how you want to handle this issue in your community. Can we go to the next slide, please? Okay, so what is the purpose of limits on the size of a campaign contribution? The United States Supreme Court, dating back to 1976, has held that contribution limits are not just constitutionally valid, but uphold an important governmental purpose, specifically that the government has a substantial interest in stemming the reality or the appearance of corruption in the electoral process. Contribution limits, said the court, are appropriate legislative weapons against the reality or appearance of improper influence stemming from the dependence of candidates on large campaign contributions. So that is the origin of campaign contribution limits and the ways in which they are justified under current law. So a Supreme Court that today, under Chief Justice John Roberts, is increasingly skeptical of campaign finance reforms, continues to uphold the validity of contribution limits. Go to the next slide. So why, what is the value of contribution limits? What do they help prevent? Now, nothing, no, no simple reform like a contribution limit is going to be an absolute firewall against any of the things on this slide, but they are meant to help prevent the things on these slides. But three kinds of corruption, I've given them names here that are not universally used, they're not terms of art, they're just for the purposes of conversation. The first is actual or quid pro quo corruption. That actually is a term of art, it's used in Supreme Court holdings. That is when somebody writes a massive check to a candidate and they get something in public policy in return. It is simple, straightforward, quid pro quo bribery or corruption. Contribution limits help prevent that because you can't get $30,000 from a single source in your campaign, you're limited to X number of dollars. The second is what one might call legalized corruption, where big money is flowing through the system, it is the lifeblood of our politics, this is true basically everywhere in America today because of holdings of the current Supreme Court, where there's no explicit corruption happening, but the policymaking process, what comes up and what doesn't come up, what moves forward and doesn't move forward, is subtly tilted in favor of those who give money to candidates, and that's because they have more access, they have the ear of candidates, or a variety of other reasons. Now, some local jurisdictions don't have this problem, others do have this problem, it is really a matter of your local political culture, but this is absolutely a danger of having unfettered big money in the campaign system. And the third is perceived corruption. Americans today, there's plenty of data and polling that shows this, are fed up with the role of big money in our politics and really do feel it undermines the trust, the credibility, and the legitimacy of our politics. And so that's another problem here. So there's actual or quid pro quo corruption, there's what one might call legalized corruption, and then separate from both of those, there's the appearance or the perception of corruption. Go to the next slide. And then separate from the issues of corruption, right, which is really the Supreme Court's, the peg on which the United States Supreme Court hangs its hat in this area of law is corruption. Donor limits, contribution limits are justified in order to prevent corruption, but there's all sorts of other reasons why a local jurisdiction might want to adopt contribution limits that are separate from corruption issues. They provide more people an opportunity to have a voice in our local politics, because candidates are forced to go fundraise for more donors. It creates fairer standards of competition for candidates, because candidates who don't have access to networks of wealth or major donors are still able to run competitive campaigns. It might lead to wider candidate outreach, and outreach to communities that otherwise wouldn't be hit up for campaign contributions because they don't donate in large amounts. There's all sorts of data that shows that innovative reforms in the campaign finance system can lead to a greater diversity in the donor pool and bring in more small donors and small donations. There's also something I mentioned earlier, which is producing greater trust in government and increasing people's faith in the political process and introduce increasing civic engagement. If you are aware that the people who represent you on the Board of Supervisors, for example, are able to take $10,000 checks from very wealthy individuals or from special interests, why give your $25? Why would you show your support within your means for the candidate of your choice if you don't feel your campaign contribution is going to be able to make a difference? And so donor limits also have an impact, somewhat attenuated, but have an impact on civic engagement in a broader sense. Move to the next slide. So where do campaign contribution limits sit currently? At the federal level, the donation limit is $2,900 per individual to a federal candidate per election. You can, so you can donate that amount in a primary and in a general. In California, the contribution limit currently for state Assembly and state Senate candidates is 4,900 per election, and again, that can be donated in the primary and the general. And that adjusts every two years for inflation. And at the local level, a number of California cities already had contribution limits, but many, many more have moved to adopt them in the wake of AB 571, a law passed by the state legislature that I'm sure you're all familiar with, but I'll give a two-second summary, AB 571 fines or mandates, that unless a city sets its own contribution limits at the municipal level, the state's contribution limit will act as a default contribution limit effective January 1st of 2021. Let's go deeper onto AB 571 on the next slide. So the state legislature provided the following rationale when it passed AB 571. "A system allowing unlimited contributions to candidates for elective office, county or city office, creates the risk and the perception that elected officials in those jurisdictions are beholden to their contributors and will act in the best interest of those contributors at the expense of the people. Whether or not this is actually true is a separate matter, the legislature is saying it cares about the risk of that and also the perception of that among the public." And additionally, the state has a statewide interest in preventing actual corruption, and again, the appearance of corruption at all levels of government, end quote. So that was the rationale behind AB 571. Let's move to the next slide. So there's a number of things to consider when a local jurisdiction needs to choose what contribution limit to adopt, if it wants to adopt one at all. The first is the population of your city and whether or not you use at-large and by district elections. Basically, we're trying to identify what is the population, the universe of donors that need to be reached? If you're running for LA County Board of Supervisors and you have to reach millions of people, you might want a higher donor limit, because you have to run a much more expensive campaign. If you're in a smaller jurisdiction that uses at-large elections, you might want a smaller donation limit. And then if you're using, in a smaller donation that uses by district elections, and so you're only campaigning to a slice of the city, you might want smaller donations still. So this question of how large the voter universe is that you're trying to reach is an important consideration when setting your donor limit. Second, what's reasonable in the context of sort of your local politics? How much does it cost to run a campaign? If you have a very expensive media market, you might want to allow for more fundraising in your campaigns. If you have a less expensive media market, you might need smaller donations. I think it's fair to say that if a donor limit, a contribution limit is too small, you're making it hard for candidates to run, and that can be problematic. If you're making the donor limit too large, there's very little purpose in having a donor limit at all, because you're getting close to that sort of unlimited access for major donors and big money. And then also, what do the residents of a local jurisdiction want? Do they want low limits or high limits? Do they, what do they think, how big does the contribution limit need to be for local residents to start seeing it as not meaningful at all? And do they come into this conversation perceiving big money as a problem in their local politics? Obviously, people have different opinions about how their local politics are run and whether or not they feel special interests or donors are being served at the expense of the public interest. These are things that you all will want to talk to your community about before deciding not. Next slide, please. So we ran some data, or we pulled some data. We, first of all, we found a number of California cities that have similar populations to Baldwin Park, and we found what their donor limits were. So here's a number of cities around California. We specify whether their elections are at-large or by district. We determined the size of the voting jurisdiction and the donor limit. And what we find in looking at cities of similar size is that the average donation is, the average donation limit is just under $500, the middle donation limit is $360, and the most common donation limit is $250. Okay, and I'm going to actually come back to summarize some of this in a slide in just a moment. Let's move to the next slide for now. So we wanted to look also regionally, not just at cities across California of similar size, but cities of various sizes in the Southern California region. Again, we've listed the cities for you, the, whether or not their elections are at-large or by districts, the size of the cities. We note here for you that the average size of the cities that we looked at overall, 27 cities, the average size is 70,800. We listed their donor limits for you, and again, here, the average donor limit is 740, the middle donor limit is 650, and the most common donor limit is $1,000. Okay, and so, and you'll see that there's, there's some, there's a number of those $1,000 limits, and you can note, if you look at the data, that is used sometimes by cities of dramatically different sizes. So Torrance is 120, actually, I'll give you a better example. Santa Clarita, 229,000 people, it uses a donor limit of 1,000. West Hollywood has only 36,000 people, it uses a donation limit of 1,000. So there's different ranges, but the, but the average, but you can see the average and the most common numbers in the top corner. And if we go to the next slide, it provides this in probably a more accessible format, so here you go. So, and, oh, I'm so, I'm so sorry, we have, we made this quickly, we have a typo in the box on the far left. But the, the, those are, the leftmost box is the jurisdictions of similar size, and you'll see the average donor limit is 360, excuse me, the median is 360, the mean, I guess, is just under 500. Then you go to SoCal cities, and you've got 743, and then if you go to the state and the assembly, you've got just under 5,000. So this is giving you some context of what donor limits look like across similar-sized cities, across the region, and across California. Okay, let's go to the next slide. There's a handful of other things to consider in addition to what the number is. The first is who's going to enforce the ordinance? Is it the city attorney, is it some sort of independent council? Do you want to contract with the FPPC to have them enforce your campaign finance laws? Do you want to use some sort of independent body? There's, there's a handful of opportunities there, different cities use different models. How long are records going to be retained? Enforcement isn't possible if records aren't kept, and so you might want to maintain a mandate that records are kept for a certain period of time. And then, you know, how do you want to handle certain questions on compliance and penalties, right? What will the, what would, what would the fine be if there's a violation? Can a resident seek to have these questions investigated? Or does it have to be the city that investigates? What would the statute of limitations be and so on? These are other considerations as well. And then let's go to the next slide. Donor limits or campaign contribution limits are usually used in combination with other kinds of reforms. In some cities, they stand alone, but a lot of cities combine them with other forms of contribution limits. So for example, you could say that certain entities that have what some, the Supreme Court sometimes refers to as a nexus to corruption, with a lower donor limit or no donor, no, a ban on campaign contributions. So for example, a city contractor, you might say if someone is actively seeking a contract with the city, while they're seeking that contract and for the duration of that contract, they can't give donations to city councils, because they're seeking business, they're doing business in front of the city at that time. Or for example, a lobbyist, a number of cities across California ban lobbyists from making campaign contributions or provide a much lower limit for lobbyists when making campaign contributions, because, you know, they're, they're seeking, they're, they're doing advocacy in front of the city, and so, you know, it would be, it might be in some, the views of some, inappropriate for them to be giving campaign contributions to the same people, their lobbying. You could theoretically ask for the recusal of a council member if they're voting on a contract from someone who they accepted a campaign contribution from in the recent past. That's another idea that's often floated and used in some jurisdictions. Separately, you can consider fundraising windows that say candidates can only fundraise during this eight-month period over two years, I'm pulling that number out of a hat, it could be six months, it could be one year out of every two years, and the idea there is to stop the sort of nonstop endless feel to the fundraising game for people in local government. You could put limitations on post-election campaign accounts. You could require greater transparency around political ads and/or independent expenditures with on-ad disclosures that go greater than the current, that go further than the current law, or, for example, the city of Oakland requires that all political ads that are put into circulation be submitted to the city's Public Ethics Commission and then posted on a website. So if a resident receives a mailer that's supporting or attacking a candidate for city council, they can just immediately go to the website and say, all right, who's paying for this? What are the origins of this document? Like, what's going on here? And then lastly, is public financing of elections, which I'm sure many of you are already familiar with. The city of Los Angeles uses a matching fund system, as does the city of Berkeley, the city of San Francisco, and other cities. The city of Seattle uses an innovative, exciting program called Democracy Vouchers that we can talk about in greater depth, but public financing systems, both matching fund systems and democracy vouchers, which are really the two primary modes of public financing of campaigns, have been shown consistently to increase the diversity of the donor pool, the racial diversity, the gender diversity, the socioeconomic diversity of the donor pool. They also increase the number of small donations, and they increase the percentage of money raised that comes in small dollar amounts. Go to the next slide, please. Oh, and that's all I have. I'm happy to take questions from the council, and thank you again for the opportunity to address you this evening.
Great, thank you. At this moment, if a council or staff has any questions or concerns, now's your time.
Mayor, I have, I have a comment and question.
Okay, go ahead, Council.
So this is directed to the consultant, I'm sorry, I didn't get his name. Is it Sean?
Uh, yes, it's.
Oh, I'm, I'm, yeah, Sean, Sean works with me, and I'm, I'm the Executive Director of the organization. I'd be happy to answer a question and kick as a Sean if I'm not able to, if that's okay.
Oh, no, 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 I'm, I'm sorry, I was just trying to get your name.
Oh, I'm so sorry, my name's Jonathan, Jonathan Metzstein.
Jonathan, okay, Jonathan, thank you, thank you for that information. And I definitely appreciate the presentation. I do, I do think that it's interesting, and I think that you'll agree with me on this, I do think that it's interesting that the state has taken action to regulate contribution limits when, we all know that the third house usually funds independent expenditures to the millions for any one candidate. So it's a little bit of smoke and mirrors for me. But my question is, in this presentation, have we thought about the independent expenditures? Because I think, you know, there's one thing to look at contribution limits. And we can, we can say that the contribution limits, you know, should be a certain amount, but is that only empowering independent expenditures? And very similar to what we see at the state level, you know, with independent expenditures, like I said, that fund millions of dollars per candidate, per election, but yet they're abiding by contribution limits. So, you know, any changes that we make here, my question is, what are we really enabling? And so are we, are we taking into consideration the independent expenditures?
Yeah, it's an excellent question and a really valuable topic of conversation. Independent expenditures are obviously a huge element of this conversation and are a mechanism by which millions of dollars flow into our political system. You're absolutely correct about that. I will note that the independent expenditures began flowing into our political system after the Citizens United decision in 2010 and subsequent Supreme Court and lower court decisions that basically said Super PACs can spend unlimited amounts of money in our politics. And after those cases were decided, we started seeing a huge influx of independent expenditures at all levels of our politics. That influx in independent expenditure money, there's no evidence that tied to imposing donor limits. It's not like any city says, we're going to use donor limits, and now we have an explosion of independent expenditures. Those independent expenditures are coming whether folks want them or not, they're coming regardless of donor limits, and they're coming because of Supreme Court decisions that enable them. Folks who want to do independent expenditures are going to do them regardless. The, the, so the question is, at least in our minds, why don't you do everything you can on both fronts? So with independent expenditures, the Supreme Court has said, you can't limit them, but you can require transparency. You can require on-ad disclosures for every independent expenditure, and you can say, if you're going to publish an independent expenditure, you need to disclose on the ad for the duration of the ad in clear fonts and type of a certain visible size, the entity that paid for this ad and the top three major donors to that entity, something like that is actually part of the California Disclose Act, which is meant to target greater transparency in these sorts of political advertisements. So you can take action on independent expenditures to address the problems they create, which are totally legitimate, Councilmember, I agree with you 1,000%. And also, attempt to limit what, what some might consider to be the undue influence that is created when a special interest group or a corporation or a contractor or someone makes a very sizable donation directly to a candidate, where the public might see a more direct tie. Now, you, I think it would be reasonable for people who are embedded in the political system to say, look, if you're going to make a, if you're going to make a massive million-dollar, i.e., it's influencing the candidate just as much as the direct contribution, but, you know, I think the answer is, I'll just trust my personal view, I don't think the answer is to say independent expenditures are swamping our system, so we're going to throw up our hands because there's nothing we can do. I think the answer is to fight back on every, with every angle we can.
Okay, so I think what I'm, what I'm understanding is that we really can't regulate independent expenditures in our city as part of this policy. And then second, but we can enforce or regulate the transparency piece of it, and so how it's reported, what's required, because I will say that it's a little disingenuous when you have activity where you have like a facade committee and that funds a candidate's campaign, you know, significantly. And so, let's say it's Workers United for the Economy, right? And then you look at, okay, well, who are Workers United for the Economy, and then, like, it's really ghost, ghost contributors. And so, you know, that's actually less transparent than what we have in place right now, which is when there is a contribution in any amount, then it should be reported to the Fair Political Practices Commission. So, you know, I want to be careful with the whole, if we're really going to be talking about campaign finance reform in this city, then I think it really has to include independent expenditures and true transparency, so that when there is any contribution made, that it is very clear, you know, who it's come from. So I think that needs to be part of it.
Can I agree with you? Yeah, can I agree with you on one, can I agree with you on one point? I, I, I hear you on the, you know, the camp, independent expenditure comes out and the committee name is, you know, Californians for Puppies and Rainbows, like, you know, and it means nothing, and it obviously is hiding the true donors, it's a real problem.
Right.
And California, at the state level, what they did is, they wrote the California Disclose Act such that, because it was preposterous, what was happening. So now, in addition to disclosing the campaign committee name, you have to disclose the top three ads, and that's why on Prop 22, if you recall the Lyft and Uber proposition on last year's ballot, there would be a committee, it would be like committee, I forget what it was, a committee for, for jobs or something, and then it would say, paid for by Uber, Lyft, Grubhub, or whatever it was. And so you can, you can require transparency that drills down to the true funders of independent expenditures. And, and I would, you know, I would applaud the city if it tried to do that, it, it's very worthwhile, in our view. And, and in my, in my view, it can be done in conjunction with, or at the same time as a reasonable contribution limit.
Okay, thank you, yes, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we're, we're looking at both independent expenditures and then individual contributions. So, yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. If there's any other questions or concerns?
To Mayor, for me?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilmember Garcia. Those are very good points, and certainly I would support everything that we can do, as Jonathan has mentioned. And thank you, Sean, for, you know, spending some time with me, you know, to learn a little bit more about this earlier in the week and sharing some information with me. I certainly think it's, you know, it goes hand in hand, as you mentioned, Jonathan, of not only the localized and the perception, but really, you know, when we go back to, you know, how we could help, you know, our constituents and residents really understand, you know, who is funding who, because that's really, at the end, at the end of the day, that's what people really care about. And it's, you know, one of those things where, you know, if we want to be transparent in regards to, you know, what we're trying to do, then I think it, it behooves us to add, you know, parameters and criterias that we ask for, you know, if IEs are being spent in our city, as you mentioned, Jonathan, not only those, but anything else that we can, you know, look at, so we can be the leading voice on the IEs, because as you've mentioned, those have, you know, taken off on a, you know, on a, on a whirlwind on their own. And it's something that I certainly see, you know, time after time in the San Giro Valley and in our own cities from time to time. But, you know, if we can curtail that to some degree, I think we'll make a big progress on top of the other items that you talked about. You know, I'm also, you know, looking forward to learning more about like the matching funds, you know, what that looks like. I know the city of LA has a program like that, where obviously it's, you know, I think it's 500,000 or so, or give or take, maybe, it's maybe changed since I've been there. there. But the candidate also has the ability to either stay with them or, or deny them and be able to do whatever it is, whatever limits that they have in the city, as a, as an example. I do believe, you know, with the matching funds that the city, that the city can do, that's encouragement, right? Because if we're asking for a cost of, you know, whatever operations of a, of a, of an item here in our city, you know, increasing your, your database or your, your contributors is a good thing, right? There's nothing wrong with that. But also, the reality is, you know, the thing that I would ask also, if you could provide us with a little bit more info too, is of those cities that you mentioned, what's the percentage of actual active voters, right? Like what's the total registered voters for each of those cities? Because a population, it, it's, it's a good number, it's a good start, but that's just a number. And it's the, usually it's a much, much smaller number in the sense of people that actually vote, or more importantly, that are registered to vote. And of that number, it's even smaller. So, but regardless, that would be very helpful. So as we look through, whether it's 750 or 1,000 or 250 or whatever that number is, that helps us understand, you know, that universe that we're trying to reach as we, as we discussed with this process. And, you know, so that was great. And I have some other questions, but it goes back to your PowerPoint. If you could just share that with us so we can maybe email you some additional questions and maybe at the next council, we can discuss more about some of these items as to how we, you know, you know, provide definitely a website, more so than what we already have to hold, you know, people accountable. But really, you know, as, as we talked about, and I think as each of us here in our city, you know, we appropriately, you know, file and share, you know, show each of our donors, regardless if it's, you know, right now, it's, I think it's, you know, less than $100, you don't actually show who that individual is, which, you know, I can care less, you know, but if people want to show, you know, which neighbor on the block is giving, that's fine. But right now, you know, anything I think over $100, you have to show that individual's contribution name and so forth. And, you know, I don't think, you know, we should be necessarily asking our employees, you know, of contribution funds or anything like that, because that certainly would put them in a awkward position. I do, I'm encouraged by the item that you talked about on the enforcement side, right? I'm certainly looking to, you know, having perhaps a third party do that enforcement for us, whether it's the FPC, because they do it so very well. I speak by experience of, you know, interacting with them from time to time. But that would be something of, you know, of worth of discussion for us as a council. Because again, it's, you know, it bifurcates the enforcement away from the city and we really truly have an entity at the state level that's really in charge of, you know, enforcing those rules, making sure it's a fair game for everyone that's involved. So I'll leave it at that. But thank you for your presentation. Thank you, sir.
Great, is there any other questions, comments? If not, you know, I, I do want to just say that I think it is an important discussion to take on. You know, I've kind of read about it. The one that I, that I'm most familiar with is Measure V from Alhambra, which they had an election on and it passed, I think, with flying numbers. And, you know, for a city like ours where, you know, we're, at this point, we're 72,000 residents, you know, we, we have had a lower, a low voter turnout, voter turnout in the past. I think it's a little bit difficult to tell what the voter's going to, what the voter turnout is going to be on average, just because, you know, 2018 was the first year we ever elected somebody in even years. Last election, we had 22,000 voters and that was, but I believe that was based on, you know, presidential election. Before that, I think, you know, somebody could, you know, take the, take a position in city council with less than 5,000 votes, and I think that was a little bit alarming. So I do think it's important. I do think that, you know, limiting contributions does, you know, erase that appearance of corruption. And I think it's important, right? You know, we don't see a lot of, a lot of, not just voter turnout, but also voter, candidate engagement where people want to run. And I think that there is a lot of people that want to run. You know, me personally, I took on a second job, which is not the norm, and I know that that's not something that everybody's able to do. But, you know, if we do want to see, you know, a diverse perspective at, at City Hall, then I think that that is something that we have to push for. You know, Councilmember Garcia brought up something very important with the independent expenditures, which is the PACs, you know, and kind of putting them also, making them accountable is also important so that people know where that money is coming from, right? So, you know, I think that this is an important conversation that needs to continue and we can look, we can look at what the cities around us are doing. I'm, I'm kind of surprised by the list that you brought up. I didn't know that, that many cities around us were actually already starting to contribute, already had a contribution limit. So that was, that was, I think, very important to see. But yeah, so I'm very, you know, I'm, I'm very interested in looking to continue this conversation. I want to thank both of you for being here with us today and then of course, Councilmember Damian for starting that conversation.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I just want to thank you one more time for the invitation to speak to you and to be part of this conversation. We will, you already have our, your staff already has our slides, but we will revisit our tables, clean them up a bit, add the number of voters per city if we can, and we'll send to your staff for sharing with the council. We'd be happy to answer questions in the future. And if you want to have a subsequent conversation about matching funds and public financing of elections, we've spent an enormous amount of time on that topic and we'd be happy to provide some insights if requested. So thank you and have a wonderful evening.
Great, thank you, thank you for being here. I believe next we have a presentation by La Canada Design Group with Kevin O'Brien and Scott Brady, and it is regarding the Soca Lo Plaza.
Yes, thank you. My name is Kevin O'Brien, Principal of La Canada Design Group, otherwise known as LCDG. Very happy to be here tonight and present this project. I'm joined by Scott Brady, who's the project architect, and he was the original designer back in 2015 for the project. We're very proud of the design, obviously. You can see the, the images scrolling through on the animation as, as I'm speaking. This project started in 2014 and was put on hold in 2015 after the design was completed and ready to be submitted for plan check by the building department. We were thrilled to get a phone call that the project might come back to life because we're actually very proud of it. One of our favorite projects, we have it prominently displayed in our office. We see it every day, so we're very excited to be presenting some options to you tonight.
And, this is Mark. Can you re-run the video again? I'm going to just briefly kind of comment on it. There's a lot, there's a lot of history to this. It wasn't something that was just randomly just put together. Okay, so we're, we're pretty much right above the, where we're standing, sitting right now, looking down into the plaza. And the idea is where the fountain is currently, right now, that's going to be redesigned into a terracing where people can sit and you have plants. You'll cross the street, you kind of, you're basically following almost parallel to Main. And there's different things that are going on. It's kind of too quick, but to the right there is the Christmas tree that you currently have in the front area. That's the, the dedication area for the Christmas tree. You have the central area of the park where you have this performance space. It looks like a pond, but technically it's only very thin. It just looks like it's a pond, but the idea is to kind of have this floating, floating platform that, that the water, that kind of accentuation. It goes back to the retail space. So the idea is to, the city wanted control over, at the time, the council people wanted control over the area where they can serve coffee and food, select who's going to be in the space. It technically will look back toward the City Hall. Part of the, the possible remodeling of the City Hall is very important, facing the City Hall. But this is from Sterling. There's parking access to the retail spaces. And that little area to the right, it's actually a collection area where the water from all the surrounding park area collects the water, so it just doesn't go out into the street. It's actually a requirement. And then to the left side of the base, like, I don't know, it would be what the street is, but basically it's added parking. It's the alley that we would be running behind the businesses. That's the current design that we're going to talk about next. The surrounding central area has seating, basically raised concrete seating. The color pink is just to kind of, just to define what it is, but it's not actually pink. And the park has kind of these modules of, of rounded concrete with grass for kind of a seating area. And the idea of the park too, is it's not, it's more of an inactive space, meaning like Morgan Park is more active or, you know, is a collective. This is more of an extension from the arts, the arts and rec center. This is a dedicated location for a veterans memorial. I don't know if that's still something that the city's interested in, but that's what that is right now. That's not necessarily a representation of what it's going to look like. It's just a marker for what it is. And this, again, is where the fountain is, it'd be taken out, this is the replacement of it. Oh, to the presentation of the options? Okay, so we're going to talk about circulation around the park. So currently, the, the current design, so go to, go to the first slide. So basically, this is the arrow of the area. We're at the bottom, just to the bottom, that's where we're sitting right now. The plaza is just out in front of us where the fountain is. And the idea in the past was to close Main Street and allocate all the space for the park. There was an area of pass-through, vehicle pass-through at the very top, just above, above at the north businesses, would be an alley, a one-way alley that would allow angled parking and access to the businesses. But the idea of it was an alley, meaning that it's a very low vehicle speed of, you know, say 15 miles per hour, maybe it's 25. The idea was that it's, the idea was so that the park could be connected to the businesses. So businesses that wanted to serve food, and it was kind of ironic that with, with COVID, you see that now where businesses and cities are actually closing streets to allow, or streets or parking to allow businesses to seat people outside. In this case, it actually works really well. We're basically going to create seating and it's connected to the park. So that was kind of the concept of the alley, meaning that you still had access, vehicle access, but you also had, if businesses wanted to serve food on the outside, they could do that. I'll go to the next slide. The idea is the park basically closes off and you can see the alley barely to the top between the businesses and the park. Right along here. This is the center area, the performance area. Here's the, currently the fountain is right here. The idea is to terrace this, create a seating area. And again, you're kind of, as the city hall is above, you're looking down onto the park. Same thing here, it's kind of, you're higher here, you're lower here, so that allows the terracing. This is where the veterans memorial was planned. And instead of just like a kind of a normal sidewalk, you have some kind of designed sidewalk. And the intention back at the time was to, you know, allow, you know, safely crossing of the street, so it's a little bit more slow. This could actually be like a speed bump. The street is not technically designed right now. The idea is it's more about just for information. This area is designed, this area is designed, that's kind of the scope. And the retail space is in the back. And again, the arc is here, so the idea was it's kind of an extension from arc to the park and, and actually a walkway to Morgan Park too. And there's this, there's another piece of puzzle right here, which is to allow a walkway out to the main area of the businesses. Okay, go to the next slide. So option one is what we just kind of talked about. Here's again, this is the one-way alley. And again, it was good access to the businesses, well-connected and, you know, it basically allocated most of the space for the park. Go to the next slide. So the option two is to basically, instead of an alley, it's more of a two-way road way where you can allow vehicles to come both ways. So instead of a alley, now it's called a road, meaning the, the vehicle speed could be 25, possibly 35 miles per hour, with parallel parking, which doesn't really show, but now parallel parking. You have to create a buffer here against the businesses, most likely to pull the, the in and out of the vehicles into the businesses, less connected to the park, but it does allow circulation through the park. It does reduce the park about 88%. So there's not a, a whole lot of redesign, but you'll lose some of the function and stuff that was kind of on the side, which was the angled parking and some of the, some of the utilities for the, for the fountain. We'd have to move it. It's probably the least impact to the park itself, allow the circulation of the traffic to come through. Okay, go to option three. Option three is the same thing. It allows traffic both ways, but the idea is on, on the north side of the park, it's a one-way road with parallel parking. And on the south, it's a one-way. The idea is not to allow left turns, but to just allow right turns, not to impede any of the traffic, traffic that's coming through from Pacific through Main. Sterling's relatively a slower street, which would allow left turns here, coming through here. The idea here is you can come right and go left, but out on the main part of Main and Pacific, there would be no left turns. That's kind of the tentative plan. Okay, go to option four. And option four is basically a two-way at the bottom of the park. It's probably the most impactful to the park, would probably require kind of redesign to, because what happens here is you can actually see that the seating area that was once, you know, safe and everything, the road actually comes through and cuts right into it. So, you know, you basically would have cars driving by right where the performance area is. So the way this really doesn't work, but it basically maintains the same circulation that you have today. It's just that the entrance right here off Pacific and Main, move from here down to here. Again, the idea is that there's no left turns. It reduces the park by 71%. Yeah, that's basically it. So those are the four options, right? One more slide? Yeah, okay, so we have the summary here, basically, I, hopefully you guys had a chance to look at this. The idea is that as you go through, through option one to option four, cost increases. We don't know the exact number, it just depends on what the design changed. Option four is probably the most expensive because the changes to the park. Technically, the road doesn't change that much, but it would be more about the redesign of the whole space versus option two, which is the alley that we currently have in the design just gets converted over to a road, so it gets a little bit wider. Definitely would have to do a traffic study to make sure that you don't have any issues. Thing about option two is that it basically has, isier where it's at. So you're not too close to Ramona, but there may be some kind of turns about having that isier of a street closer to Ramona. But it's something that have to be considered. Again, option one is the basis of design, there's no effect, no change. And you go from 88% from option two to 71% for option four in terms of loft space. Option three is another decent option. You do lose some of the park space to the south, which I know, I guess the way to say is you lose that connection to the, to the south of the park, which is the church, and you have some apartments and housing. And the nice thing about the park is the idea is it allows, it's kind of the seed to allow potentially future growth of housing. But currently, right now, it's connected to the church and the housing, which is kind of nice and not having traffic have to come through it. Then in option three, option three, you, now you're creating kind of a complete circulation around the park, making it not, not as quiet, which is kind of the idea of an inactive park, to be more peaceful and connected to art. So those are the four options. And I guess, did you want to talk about that last slide? Let's go to the last slide. So the last slide basically is just talking about three phases. So the current design of the phasing was to do the main park and the retail space. The second phase was to do where the fountain currently is located, the City Hall Plaza. And then the third phase is this bag that connects the park out to Ramona. Basically it?
Any questions now?
Great, thank you, thank you for the presentation. You know, as, as somebody who takes the 10 eastbound, you know, one of my, not going to lie, one of my priorities was trying to find a, a way to keep that street open. But, you know, speaking to staff and of course hearing you, I think you bring a good point, right? And that's that if, if we allow cars to go too fast through there, make it a way for, to continue to be in a street, you separate it from the businesses. So, you know, I, I think at that point, we'd be risking having an isolated park that nobody's going to want to enjoy because there's too much cars or you're trying to see a performance and then, you know, the cars are just zooming by you, which is probably uncomfortable. And, you know, of course, the estimated costs. So I, I do think that, you know, it, it makes sense to keep it as the original, keep the original design in place to keep that sense of the downtown area going, right? Rather than not hitting the, the goal that we're trying to hit. But, you know, thank you for being here today and thank you for working on this. You know, we're all very excited about this, being able to get the grant funding from the state and, and making it happen. So, you know, you won't have to just walk through it at your office and a picture, you'll be able to walk through it soon, right? So, thank you. But at this point, if councilor or staff have any questions?
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Thank you for that beautiful presentation. I've seen it quite a few times and every time I see it, I'm in awe, I get really excited about just seeing it there. And I'm actually waiting for that. I think the first phase works out well. It's safe because it reduces the traffic, the speed. And if we do go ahead with the third phase of it, where we open it up so people can cross over to the other side where there's the, a couple of restaurants and then to the park, it'll be safer for them to cross through that alley because we won't have as much traffic. Speaking of the second phase now, across from City Hall, I think that monument for the veterans is excellent. And I've seen, I've seen quite a few, I've been looking through, through different monuments. I want to have something that really stands out so we can honor our veterans. And I actually would like to go a little further and, and start a design. And I actually would like to go a little further and, and start a design to reface the whole front of City Hall and have it match more like the way our park looks. It has that Spanish type looking. So we can work on a design with that at the same time that we're working with the other phases with phase one and two. Because I think if we do that Veterans Memorial and then reface the whole front of, of City Hall all around, around to this police department area. Where people, when they're coming down in the train, they can see a build, a nice building, not just a block. Because as you can see, it's just so blocky looking. It's ugly. So I think it needs a lot of work. So, Sam, I would like to give direction for, for them to work on a design so we can reface the whole front of City Hall and make it look nicer. Since we're going to have a really nice park in front. Might as well upgrade the whole area, see what that's going to look like and what the cost would look at as well. Again, I'm very excited. Thank you for, for presenting this. And I look forward to, to starting and start, let's start doing and let's start the work. I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm excited too.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Can we get the slides back up, please? Can you look at the options, one, two, and three? All right, we don't have copies in front of us, so. Do the next one? Go back to the first? Next? Next slide? Just leave it there. Fourth slide? Can you go back to option two? Option one? Couple of questions. One is, have we've done any outreach to the businesses regarding this proposal?
So, not, not, not currently with this phase. So there was some outreach that was done in 2015.
2015?
In 2015, right. So part of, part of the plan is to incorporate outreach efforts moving forward.
No, I appreciate that. You know, I like, I certainly like the Soca Lo. It looks very nice. It's warm. It's inviting. I just have a couple of concerns. One is, I think you mentioned water usage, right? At some point?
Yes. So what happens is, you can't just, the code now, you can't just,
Right, you gotta be able to capture.
Just can't let the water go into the street and go into the ocean. So what, the idea is you try to keep the water on site. So the idea is that this, this area around the retail space is a collection area for the water. So it's kind of a rocky, kind of, it's lower than lowest part of the park. And this is where the water kind of locates.
No, great. And then Sam, is there any way that we could help leverage, you know, some of the Measure W funds for this? So we could not only capture it in that way, but also perhaps even put a basin underneath where that is similar to our dog park, where we're doing some of that work. So we're able to capture that and, you know, put it back into the aquifer. Now, there's no water element in this. Is that correct?
There is. Park, right here, around the platform.
No, okay. So I would, my suggestion would be to remove the water element because again, one of the things that we're, that we're in, and we're always going to be, is in a drought. And if we're asking for our residents to reduce water and so forth, it makes no sense for us to be adding to the challenge of, you know, new water. Now, if you want to be able to recycle the water from what's being captured underneath, then that's a whole different option. But to add an element of water during a time of drought, in which we now know climate change is affecting and impacting us, I would certainly recommend, you know, utilizing DG instead, a little bit more in that sense. Or maybe it's Plexiglas, you know, the four-inch Plexiglas that gives it that, you know, that look instead of actual water element. I mean, I'm all for water. But not as a, as a, as a way of, you know, adding a, you know, a nice touch. You know, we already have a nice water fountain that, that, you know, as you enter in the city of Baldwin Park, which is a nice thing. But I don't believe that we certainly need to be adding more elements of water when we should be taking a role in, you know, creating landscape that is, you know, drought tolerant. Now, I see a lot of green. I don't see green in my picture, but I see a lot of green. Is that grass or what is that?
Yeah, so we actually went through exactly what you're talking about back. What happened is in 2015 is,
Right, we had the second drought.
Allow the residents to turn your water off and don't water your grass. But here we were doing a park that was all grass. So this has actually been redesigned. So this, this lighter green is a light.
Okay.
And then the darker areas is actually, so the grass was added, but included, but in smaller areas. So you could still, on a hot, on a cold day, the concrete domes, you could absorb the heat. You can sit against them and you have a little bit of grass around them. That was kind of the concept.
Could we perhaps change that to artificial grass? Because again, grass requires water. And again, the state's, you know, asking everyone to reduce water consumption. It's not something that's, it's out of the norm. It's now the practice. And moving forward, that's going to be the case. So if there's a way of keeping all those elements, but using the artificial grass would be, would be best. Because then, because again, at the end of the day, if we're, if the city's using more water, that's going to be, you know, costing our residents more. Because we pay, we pay the actual water utility. We don't get it for free from Valley County Water. So that's something, just if we can do that. The other thing is, is there any, I'm certainly concerned about the, the main pathway. What type of safety devices do we have there? Because I'm telling you now, even, it's a, it's a dead trap almost. Where crossing the street from here, across the street from, to the Soca Lo is quite dangerous, even now, right? So what type of safety elements do we have or can we add that will slow down traffic? Because if you have a green light up on the, up, up above, people are just going to drive right around through that corner. And it narrows down, especially if you're a cyclist. So what are we doing about that for people that are commuting or riding their bicycles along that area?
The idea was, the idea was, I think I mentioned before, the idea was to slow it down by possible speed bumps. So this area technically has not been designed.
Okay, all right.
Drawings are showing this. Like if you actually go in the drawings, open the project is here. So this, because we didn't know what was going on at the street at the time, because the city was evaluating all the street. The idea was to slow it down with some type of slowing device, like, like if you ever go to like the beach areas like Ludacris, where flying by, but you have tons of pedestrians. They have blinking systems, right? Where somebody pushes it, blinking system tells everybody to basically slow down and stop. But, you know, there's speed, there's speed bumps. The idea was that this itself was higher than the actual street. So it'd act like a big speed bump. That was conceptually test, but that's not technically what's going in the drawing.
Not a problem. That's something we can discuss when we get to the next phase then. If we could just make a note of that. To be able to slow down the traffic and so forth, that would be, I would feel very comfortable.
Can I go back to the water really quick? You ever been to like some of those plazas where you see like, just basically an inch of water and the water pops up and the that's what that really is. It's technically only about a very small, thin thing of water. And you cut it off, have no water there and it just, but it is, or you can put water into it and it so it doesn't have to be water the whole time. Basically a very thin layer of water, arc surface. So when you just have like an inch worth of water and you do an arc surface, it'll tell if that's four feet deep or if that's one inch. The idea is that it's very,
It's very shallow. It's actually safer that way too.
I understand the shallowness, and that's great. And I appreciate that. But again, my concern is, you know, we're adding another water element when we're asking residents to, you know, not water their lawns. Actually, the city in Baldwin Park actually has water restrictions currently for our, for our residents. So I'm just trying to be a good steward. And, you know, if there's a different element that can bring to that, I'm certainly open to that. Whether it's lighting, you know, in blue that you could put in underneath. I've seen that in different areas. You know, if you go to like the W in Hollywood, or on the, over near UCLA, there's that, where they have the steps there and they have, it looks like water, but it's actually illuminated by LED lights underneath. I can certainly, you know, if, yeah. So there's ways of, you know, changing that to continue that element of design, which I don't, you know, want to get into. But that would certainly be helpful. And then what was the other one? That was about it. You know, I certainly welcome, you know, the, what Mayor Protemp mentioned in regards to the facade. You know, when we get into that phase, to certainly look towards that and, you know, more importantly, look at what, you know, what the funding may have, what we may have for that. But if, I'm currently just, you know, myself, I prefer, just go back to one, sorry. I do like option, option one is not bad. I do like that. You know, my preference is to obviously open it up a little bit more for parking. Because we do know for a fact that on the other side, there is no parking, you know, during, during, during business hours right now. So, you know, if we're asking for people to come here, you know, who's coming here and are they going to drive here? Or more importantly, the other thing we should think about also is look at our bus shuttles, right, that we have in the city. Do they, you know, do they drive around here and do, and can we have each of our lines perhaps do a drop-off here? So it makes it easier for folks outside this particular area to be able to come in on a, on a bus that we provide. Thank you.
So, just kind of touching on the topic. So one of the issues, I think one of the issues, I know we're trying to save water and we are doing a lot to save water and I think we'll hear about it soon. But one of the issues with artificial grass is that then we're creating plastic and then we have no way to recycle it. And then I think it has a lifespan of 10 years. So on the City Hall portion, we currently have a lot of grass. And we will, it seems like we're going to get rid of most of it, if not all of it, right? So I think when I first read about the Soca Lo, it said it was like a 5% grass. I don't know if that's true. 5% grass usage throughout the whole plaza, throughout the whole project?
Yeah, in terms of square footage of the whole plaza, that, that's about right, about 5%.
Yeah, you know, in fact, I think I said these are grass, like a, how tolerant? I get, the whole thing is supposed to be the thing about the grass is that
Hot in the summer?
Artificial grass gets hot. That's one thing. But it's definitely water. Another thing that's used amazing water underneath the grass, water conservator. Like a drip system for grass, not losing all that water from evaporation. So water conscious, I think. You want to be at water and if you don't.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, sorry. And then I just, I agree with Councilmember Hernandez about the transit. Not specifically the parking. So I know that, you know, the parking lot on the other side does get filled. But I always look at the one across the street and nobody's using it. And I kind of talked to Sam about the potential of even putting like electric vehicle chargers there to see if people will start using it. Because that side is, is very unused. And of course, we also have the parking structure on the other side of City Hall. And then I think the recent survey said that we had an abundance of parking. You know, and I don't know, I don't know how it would come off if we reduced park space for more parking. But I do agree with the transit idea where we should be encouraging people to take the bus here and, you know, figure out a way to make it to the, you know, not just people from outside of the city, but people on the corners of the city. They get on the bus and they get dropped off right here at the Soca Lo and they can walk around. And it would go with the walkability plan, right? April temp, yes?
Thank you. I just wanted to add, I think I had asked Sam if we were going to have lighting in the water feature areas. And you had mentioned that we could have lighting in those sections, right? Both with where the retail is and where the performance stage would be. Also, around, how many trees are we putting in this park besides the area where we're going to have the big Christmas tree?
Oh yes, so these light green elements here, those represent trees.
Okay.
Some larger trees, or like, like for example, the larger trees you have out here in the plaza. Smaller trees. Kind of a combination of all different types of trees.
Okay. And is there other sitting areas around the park area besides the main stage?
Yes, so there's, the idea was, actually, you know, this idea was area for grass, the main area. But yeah, there's smaller little, little pink, or like their inches.
Okay.
And then the idea about these are kind of more, you know, back spaces. Concrete. And then you have some kind of, not DG, kind of grassy or ideas to try to make it, benefit of doing grass is on a hot day. Nice to have people actually come, go to artificial turf and you go that's about tolerant. Doesn't, grass cools you down. So it's kind of nice to have a little space of grass, just the picnic and walk over the deep water. Idea that pink area around here, benches here. The idea is on the retail space on this deck, this is kind of a can-leaver deck out into this you'd have seats. And these are
And I agree, the, the turf, although it looks beautiful, it is very hot and, and it has a smell to it. It smells, to me, it smells toxic. So we do want to conserve the park idea where you want to sit in, in somewhere that it's fresh and cool. Where you're breathing fresh air and those trees are going to help us clean the air in the city of Baldwin Park. Because we just got a report that our air is not very clean here. So I think the more trees that, that we put into our parks and grass areas, I think we're better off. So those, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Add here to, little alcoves here. Areas that are surrounded with bushes. Ah, into the park.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Gertia.
Okay, so I think that most of the comments have been with regard to onsite of the project. And I would say that, you know, I mean, all of these site plans and designs look very nice, but my concerns are with regard to the circulation and what is offsite. So if I look at this area, this is an area that bottlenecks from Pacific Avenue leading north to Main. And it already has its design challenges. What I'm concerned about is if we impact Sterling Way to Little Main Avenue, which drops onto Pacific slash Main Avenue, that it's going to impact circulation pretty significantly in this area. And I don't think that our, our residents will be happy about it. If I look at the road diet, you know, the complete street, safe routes to school project that we just completed along Main Avenue with very minor changes to help slow down traffic. We had such, you know, community concerns about it. And I think that, yes, the community has acclimated, they understand why we made those changes. I think this little area is going to be a lot more problematic when it comes to circulation, already, you know, existing challenges that will be compounded by changes to the streets here. So what, my first question is, what would you propose as far as a buffer for, you know, this project onsite as you're traveling southbound on Main as it becomes specific? Because my concern is if there are people gathering and we have the kind of traffic and circulation that we have even to this, you know, on this day currently, without it even being impacted in the future, I think it's going to, we're, we're going to have to think of a buffer so that we can protect anybody, any pedestrians onsite. So that would be my first recommendation. But my real concern, again, is going back to the circulation of this area and how it's going to be impacted. And I, I will say very firmly that I will not support a project that closes Sterling Way or Little Main Avenue. And I think that community outreach is really important because I, I think that, that's something we've heard in the past from community members and will probably hear. because I, I think that, that's something we've heard in the past from community members and will probably hear moving forward. So I really want to highlight the importance of doing community outreach for this project as part of selecting the design. Because once we make these, you know, changes, these permanent changes, we're, it's not like we can easily go back and undo them. So those would be my comments, recommendations, concerns. Everything onsite looks nice, I think for me, you know, option four, because it doesn't close off Little Main. And again, having the buffer is going to be very important. So it just keeps our, you know, the pedestrians safe. And then as far as like any extension to City Hall and any revamping of City Hall of the facade, I would ask that we consider, our downtown has a very art deco feel to it. So, you know, we could just consider that as far as architectural style that is unique to our downtown. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Councilmember Damian.
Yeah, I would, I would hate to delay the project any further. I think this project has been a project that's been delayed for, for many years after we did have a, a lot of community input regarding this project. For me, I looked at all four options when Sam sent us the email a couple of days ago. And it makes no sense to change it from option one. This, this project has been delayed enough. I don't think, I mean, the traffic, we're facing, we've always had traffic in this area. But obviously shrinking the lanes on Main, coming all the way down from Arrow Highway all the way to Pacific, was what really created more of a traffic nightmare for our residents. So the traffic's already there. And if we really want to create an actual downtown where it's going to be more of a walkable downtown like other cities have, like Monrovia, Covina, where we want people to come out, walk, you know, enjoy the restaurants in these plazas, we don't want, you know, the vehicles driving by there at, you know, 35, 40 miles per hour. They're going to have to slow down. So I agree that safety is a big concern, which is, which to me is the reason why we should stick with option one. Because we don't want all that traffic around the area. But again, remember, this is going to be our anchor to try to start downtown and move it up towards, you know, north to try to revamp the other area. But for me, I, I would go with option one. I liked Vice Mayor Avila's decision to, you know, try to see if we can get a design to kind of match the, the Soca Lo for the, the front of City Hall. And also just, I would like to see green space. I wouldn't want to see any green turf. I mean, you know, you want to take your kids out in the summer, you want to open space, you want to breathe fresh air. I don't want to go sit on, on any asphalt turf. I want, you know, original green. I'm conscious that we have to save our water, but there's ways to do that and still have green space available for our residents. Those are pretty much all of my comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Great, thank you. You know, I, I personally agree. I mean, you know, we've, we've heard, you know, the bike lanes get defended for the past three or four years. You know, and those bike lanes are everywhere. You know, I don't see why we can't defend, you know, one-tenth of a mile on Little Main. Especially when we talk about the safety of pedestrians, people on their bikes. You know, we hear this idea, we always hear about, you know, the little girl who had a fatal accident up on Baldwin Park. And this is the same thing, right? We wouldn't want to have looming cars where we're trying to get people to come out and enjoy and gather. So, you know, I think we need to keep the same energy that we've had for the last couple of years, talking about safer streets and having people slow down a little bit and making the space safer for our community. Like I said, I'm, I work in, I work borderline San Bernardino County, so I am one of the most impacted by this. I take the East Ten every day. You know, I understand the concern. But in the long run, I think that I'm better off, you know, taking an extra five minutes to go around for the, for the better benefit of the city. So thank you for being here today. I know this is a project that's been long coming and I'm sure we're all as excited. So thank you, thank you for being here today and I think we're ready to move to the next-
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thanks, sir. Really quickly, can you just put the, the PowerPoint one more time again? Doesn't matter which option, one or two or whatever. My understanding is the, one of the corners, I believe it's the bottom right-hand corner on Main East, do we own all this property now, or is some of this property belong to a different entity like the school district?
Uh, there is a small little angle. That's one piece, talking about the bottom piece. Car wash, I don't know. Actually, uh, property, parking area. Or do they have, or jots right into it? Building comes right to the property line. Technically, in their entrance, actually, I-
Ah, perfect.
Dynamic. Part of this, talk about the roads and circulation, when you have the road that's kind of, kind of have this dynamic with this property owner right here, so.
And option one eliminates that small alleyway, is that correct? And option one eliminates-
Option one-
I got that part.
Alley is part of option one.
Yeah. Is there a, a road down below where, what option is this where I, it looks like there's a road there at the bottom?
Sidewalk.
That's a sidewalk, okay, okay.
But option four or option three?
No, 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 no.
Option, basically it's a one-way road. That's actually city property. I'll read this, I'll read this.
I think, no, I appreciate that. And, and we're already in conversations with, to purchase the land. That includes the $7 million to purchase the land from the school district, or whatever that amount is?
Yes, that is correct. So we have reached out to the school district to begin the discussion of that land.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So I think, you know, kind of hearing everybody out, I think the majority has said option one is okay. That gives you the direction to move forward.
Right. So Mayor, just to recap, so general direction is to go with option one?
Correct.
And to include a facade design for the building?
Correct.
Correct? Okay. And we're also going to-
Yeah, costs, doing the cost and the design.
With the cost.
Yeah.
That's what we want to find out.
So also, we'll be very sensitive to the water use and we'll look into that. And I did want to mention that, as Scott mentioned before, the, the street is not part of this design. But staff did receive a first mile, last mile grant in 2018 to incorporate first mile, last mile improvements along the, the road here to make it safer. And one of the things that we're going to be doing is installing a HOC system at that location to make it safe for folks who want to cross the street. And also, as Councilmember Monica mentioned, we, we also have those concerns regarding traffic and circulation. So part of the, of, of the project would be to enlist a traffic engineer and do some traffic modeling and learn more about the impact. And to Councilmember Paul's point, we do plan to do quite a bit of outreach to the community regarding, regarding this project.
Right.
Thank you.
Sam, really quick, and you're going to look into the Veterans Memorial as well. I mean, it was already part of it, so just to look at, start looking at designs and all.
Correct.
Great. And then just real quickly, so can that be, so I know that we have a, we have a couple of veteran memorials at Morgan Park, I think we have two. So can this one be a more general, just, I know that we kind of celebrate everybody who enlists into the military that comes from Baldwin Park. So maybe this can be a more general celebration of that. Okay, Paul. Great, thank you all. And I believe that that was our last presentation for today and the city council will now move to recess to close session.
Thank you, gentlemen, for that.
Thank you.